Please call the votes.
Yes.
Winters.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Eckhart.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Hannaford.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it to be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on July 15, 2019. Item B is approval of claims in the amount of $354,286.50 in payroll expenses of $439,008. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? No. Got a motion by Mr. Stelling, a second by Dr. Hannaford to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling.
Yes.
Hannaford.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Item six is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Public comment will be limited. Two minutes per speaker. The speaker must approach the podium and identify themselves. This is not a discussion. This is one at a time. You guys may have the floor to say what you need to say. We'll listen to the public comment. Randy, will you keep the clock for me?
My name's Megan Caldwell. I'm here to give a statement regarding the executive session that you'll enter later in the meeting. And the business manager of the city of Alva is to oversee the various departments. It shall be his duty to see if the various departments are operated economically and efficiently and to the best interest of the city. I want to call to attention the emphasis matter that's listed in several of our audits since 2013, actually being that the Alva Hospital Authority is operating at a loss and with a negative amount of working capital. It's been cited every single year under governmental activities. It says that we gave $407,655 to the hospital authority during last year's audit resulting in $5,818,614 in debt just for the hospital. There have been 24 deficiencies listed in the audit since 2014. This is due to the irresponsible handling of our city manager. The leaks in the professional building roof. I notified Jerron on October 2017 that there was black mold on the back of ceiling tiles in the professional building. June 13th of this year, the first mold test was performed. June 16th, there was another major leak and collapse in Suite J. June the 19th, there was an email about us fixing the roof to have a reduction in rent over our portion of the building after water was pouring in. On June the 20th, responding, they understood the seriousness, but that if we felt he was negligent, we could file a tort claim. On June the 26th, another email because some of our staff were experiencing breathing problems. Again, I was simply told that if we were unhappy, we could file a tort claim. I believe that he shouldn't be neglecting his duties in every area and telling people that if they don't like it, they can sue the city. It's already happening in several instances. Mold tests were done on June 13th, and I did another one on July 1st, presented it to you guys on July 15th, and I feel like that justified an emergency meeting or a special meeting to get something taken care of tonight. I have a handful of paperwork here that I'd be happy to send with you to the executive session before you complete a six-month performance review. I'm here to respectfully request that the city council consider terminating Mr. Dunham as the city business director. And state statute and city ordinance issue the authority to do so with majority vote.
Thank you. Please take your documents. You can go away. So do you have a public comment?
My name is Jeffrey Madden. My statement is concise. Alva ordinance 2018-004 is blatant overreach of power. Its open knowledge of members voting on this ordinance without being properly prepared. Based on that fact, I feel revisions must be made. The citizens have not been represented properly. We need to find a common ground. We need change. We need it now.
Thank you.
I think you all know me. I'm Lenny Reed. I'm a native of Alva, though I did take a vacation for 38 years, but I moved home. I'm concerned about the shrinking downward size of the Alva business community. As one elderly lady recently told me that she can remember Alva having about seven bars, and we are now down to two or three. And as a college town, there is something wrong in Alva. It could be a side effect of the new state liquor laws. I can also remember when Alva had six to seven liquor stores. Now, we're down to really, basically, one. All of these changes have having a massive effect on our sales taxes. Meanwhile, Alva has three major empty business sites near the intersection of 64 and 281 by the college. This will not leave a very positive impression on people coming into Alva looking to do business. Now, Alva has moved to stop medical marijuana businesses from coming into Alva by an extreme zoning regulations. Additionally, with six to seven empty spots on the downtown square, plus a huge empty hole in the downtown square, this city needs to get its act together and start trying to get new businesses to move into Alva. With the medical marijuana facilities, not having those, Alva citizens are driving to Cherokee and Winoka for their needs. And these people, there are also people here who cannot get their needs met, including some who are on limited incomes and cannot drive to either city. By going to Cherokee or Winoka, they, those cities, are gaining the sales taxes.
Thank you, Lenny.
My name is Michelle Dupree. I am here to put before you my and several other like-minded individuals intention to peacefully protest the ordinance put into place regarding medical marijuana. I myself am not an MMJ licensed patient, however, that doesn't prevent me from being an advocate, and I seek your acknowledgement in this matter. This protest includes ordinance that effectively prevents a retail MMJ establishment from opening within the city limits, particularly in light of the fact that one such establishment met all the requirements handed down by the OMMA, passed the fire marshal's inspection, and was not allowed to open. This protest will be on September 4th, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on the courthouse lawn here in Alva. We count on you to do what is best for the citizens of this city without letting your personal beliefs or opinions impair fair judgment. Many of your constituents believe that you have failed on this issue. I know that people have approached you, spinning venom and making demands, and we're not that people. We are choosing to gather together and exercise our right to peacefully protest in the hopes that you will understand how these ordinances are affecting patients in Alva who have decided to medicate not with pharmaceuticals but with medical marijuana. For that reason, I humbly invite you to come out and meet the patients who are waiting to have ease and access to the medication they chose. I invite you to take hold of one of the many informative flyers we will have on hand and read the facts of how helpful marijuana is in treating diseases and chronic pain. I invite you to mingle, ask questions, and familiarize yourselves with the need of your constituents. In closing, I wish to impart the words of Alva on sign. Any fool can know. The point is to understand.
Thank you.
My name is Cindy Dupree. Shelley is my daughter-in-law. I had wrote up some things I would like to talk to you about with medical marijuana, but I need her to read that for me if you don't mind. Go ahead.
She wrote, "My name is Cindy Dupree. I support everything Michelle said, and I will be protesting with her and many others. I didn't always support marijuana as a medicine. I was taught my whole life that marijuana was a bad addictive drug. I had to change my views because of my own medical issues. I have scoliosis, chronic back pain, three slipped discs in my back, fibromyalgia, arthritis, panic attacks, and anxiety. I also have Huntington's disease, which is a terminal brain disease with no cure and only one medication that is horribly expensive and has very bad side effects. I had to change a lifetime of bias against marijuana, and cannabis has helped me so much. I can now stand for longer than 10 to 15 minutes without crying. My anxiety attacks are at a minimum. My fibromyalgia is manageable, and it helps with the muscle pain from Huntington's. The only problem I have with using MMJ is that medicine. I can't get my MMJ cure in Alva. I can't drive long distances. This is why I'll be protesting Alva's MMJ ordinances, and I hope that it will help you understand why we need to fix this." Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mary Lou and Rick. I'm here also to talk about the medical marijuana. I have nine essential tremors, and it is not Parkinson's, and I can't even eat with a spoon or fork. And I am hoping that medical marijuana will help me, and I'm willing to try it, but we don't have that facility in Alva. And Cherokee has two, Winoka has one, and I think it would help the revenue of our city if we had a facility in our town. Also, I would like to praise you, the city, and your employees for the streets that you are asphalting. They are just wonderful, and thank you very much.
I'm here to speak about the pool. I'm looking backwards here, but I am a proud no vote for the pool. I was one. I voted no, not because I don't think that Alva needs a pool. I grew up with a pool in the city. I don't believe that we need the pool that was proposed. I think there were votes that were no for that reason. I would proudly be a part of any group working towards consensus so that we might have a pool here in Alva for the next eight years. Thank you.
Think I'll embarrass myself a little bit.
I didn't come here to speak, but since I'm here, I'll speak. I'll tell you. My name's Christopher Smiley. I didn't want to speak about marijuana. I didn't know that was going to be an issue in the meeting, but I'm of the opinion that I don't think we need a bunch of vice cops or vice cop laws governing people's behavior. I think what they choose to do inside the walls of their own home, as long as it's not harming anybody else, is up their business. I don't think the city should get involved in zoning out business because they don't like it. The streets in this town are getting addressed somewhat in some places in some kind of strange manner, but I don't see the progress that other people seem to see. I don't know what you guys choose to use for a decision-making process as to what streets get it and what streets don't, but my street got chip sealed, which is some kind of third-rate bull crap program that just does nothing but buckle underwater. My street's destroyed after less than two years, and I'm sick of driving on it. I'm sick of driving on half the streets in this town. It's bad for my car suspension, cost me more money. If you're going to pave a street, I recommend that you spend the money that necessary to pave it properly. You do what you want to do, but that's my two cents. And as far as this pool issue is concerned, I voted no for the same reasons the last person spoke about. I think it's fiscal irresponsible to overburden people with taxes and then ask them to pay more. I think it's also irresponsible to ask people who own the home or property in this town to pay more rather than everybody. You know, if I use the pool, I expect to pay for it, whether that be an annual due or per time I come use it. And I think that your behavior, Mr. Parker, is totally irresponsible online, and I think that you need to publicly apologize to Megan Caldwell.
Appreciate it, Megan.
Thank you for your time.
My name's Jackie Rule, and I just want to talk about the pool. I did vote yes, because we need the pool. I don't understand how the grants work, but I understood that I didn't, we're spreading the cost out amongst everybody that comes into town or those who own homes, and I didn't see the increase being that significant. But I do know if we don't get a pool, house properties, businesses, that's an asset for everybody to have a pool in this town. I hope you continue to find some kind of middle ground that everybody can agree on and can get a pool going sometime. And I appreciate the work you've done for this city. I think it takes a lot on a person to hear criticism, and while you're having to bite your tongue doing it, it's commendable. So keep up the good work.
I'm confused on how we pick what ordinance we want to enforce. We get a medical marijuana shop that's going to go in, that's going to support and put tax dollars back. We getting enough where we shut down whatever. We get housing additions. We get trailer houses that come in and go through the process, and our city manager says, "Let's go ahead and move this trailer house on Eighth Street." Took me five minutes to see that all the paperwork that was submitted to him was wrong, and I shouldn't have to do that as a private citizen. I don't work here. I live here. And our city manager goes, "It's not my fault. Must be our inspector." And I've had a council member tell me, "It must be our inspector." He's new. He's brand new. If you can't supervise people, you shouldn't be in a supervisor role. Supervising people's hard, ridiculously hard. But if you're going to make them the scapegoat because we've got screw-ups in our government, we need new government. I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
First, since the pool has been brought up, I would like to hope anyway that you will start over on the pool situation, maybe look into fixing the pool if it's possible, at least find out what it would take. If not, maybe refinance it. Everybody I talked to that was a no vote wasn't against the pool, it was against how it was being financed. My main issue here is this ONG franchise. You're going to get, I guess you're going to get a chance to possibly redo what you've done. Now, I don't know some of the things, but this is one of the publications of that ordinance and all of that that was in there, and of the legal notices. But one thing's left out of it, the date of the election. I don't know how much notice you have to have before the election that's published or not, but my understanding is this is the legal notice. And plus, I hope some of you others have given a little more thought to it, like Mr. Winters did, that this is a pass-through tax. When you're raising that tax in three to four percent, all you're doing is taxing your own people, yourselves and the people of Alva. And I think you found out that last week that the people of Alva about decided they've had enough tax. I don't know what happens if this gets voted down. I'm assuming you're going to get nothing. And I don't know, probably holds ONG to no kind of obligations, but if we're doing franchise tax, don't tax the people. Get something from ONG, like maybe maintain a pay station in Alva where you can go in and pay your bill. Thank you.
I'd like to start by saying, my entire life, the way I have lived and the way I talk to people and the way I deal business with people, I've been told that by very many people that they've been disappointed in me for the way I have acted or thought or the way I've presented myself. I've dealt with inmates for over nine and a half years. I had a supervisor sitting over here to my left that had to supervise me for over nine With that being said, the little mishap that happened while my city government tells me that they're disappointed in the way that I, as a citizen of Alva, act, who goes to church and speaks as a godly man, it kept everything I could do from not commenting on that. I don't agree with everything that this panel has to choose for me and my family. And sometimes because I'm afraid of either losing my job or the backlash my family will get from the people that work here or the people that are going to read this piece of paper, that keeps me from saying a lot of words. But I will say that I am disappointed in actions that people that are supposed to be hired than me talk to the city of Alva because it was a vote. Two-thirds of the people in Alva voted. We're not dumb. These people aren't dumb. They're well informed. They noticed the tax.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
All right, if there's no more, we'll move on to... No, sir.
My name's Shannon Corbett. I'm the owner of Joint Pains LLC. I don't have a lot to say to you folks other than thank you for letting us join. These folks in here make me do what I do. This lady right here, she's willing to change. She's willing to give something a try. This lady right here is why I opened my doors. That lady is why my wife and my daughter go to work every day in Winoka at our other facility. And these folks right here have come out to support us as a family, and you're telling them no. That's all I got to say. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Leave the world. Thank you. Thank you so much, Megan. Thank you.
We'll move on to item number seven, reports from staff. Alva Tourism Tax Meeting on July 17th. Mr. Martin?
There was one item that came up, life's over Alva. It was fully funded and expected. Speak on that. It sounded like that was a great event this weekend, something to build on in the future. Any questions?
Council have any questions? Mr. Martin? Thank you. Next item is Alva Hospital Authority Meeting on July 16th. Dr. Hannaford?
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. Some highlights from our CEO's report. We're doing a look at what we can do for our arranged service system. We did recruit and hire three new RNs, which helped with reduce our contract worker labor down, and then we discussed a little bit about some roof damage. There was no medical credentialing. Committee recommendations, reviewed PLOPE, and had three approvals of bylaws, medical staff bylaws, and our dietary menu. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions for Dr. Hannaford? Thank you. Next item is Parks and Building Committee Meeting on July 24th, 2019. Ms. Hamilton, you have a report?
Yes, we had three items on the agenda. One was the request on the tourism land and water conservation grant, fund grant. The other one was a discussion on the swimming pool construction timeline and discussion on funding a separate splash pad at Hatfield Park. Those were all just discussed and ideas thrown out, and we also talked about the roofing over at the professional building. We had, a number of people had turned in ideas of how they wanted to bid on it, but then when it came down to it, we didn't want to bid, which we'll address later in the meeting.
Does council have any questions for Ms. Hamilton? Next item is the Ordnance Committee Meeting on July 31st, 2019. Mr. Stelling?
Yeah, we met earlier today with our attorney, Sarah Lewis, and then later on, we had an excellent meeting of the Orders Committee, and we decided that since the state is kind of moving target as far as the medical marijuana deal, that we decided to wait to see what they have decided comes down because they're kind of, like I said, keep changing things everything. We were to change something that wants to be out of date in no time at all, so we decided just to stay on our ordinance as is.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Stelling? Thank you. Next item, Randy, actually, would you also, did you say you had a date for...
Yeah, we had a conference call with Mr. Sidworth, Land Use Committee, and I believe our next meeting will be September 4th. We're trying to get things lined out as far as some of the issues as far as nailing down the size of the properties and what to have in zone that, and to, that way we can figure out who would be actually out of compliance. Everything we're trying to bring everybody into compliance, and then actually you're supposed to be getting them. They got an ordinance for dummies where it tells what each ordinance actually allows and doesn't allow, everything, so we can look at it and see what we're actually looking at. But that meeting will be September 4th.
Questions from the council? Next item is Public Library Board Meeting on August 5th. Mr. Eckhart?
One of the first things we talked about was if you ever see the library statistical reports for the things we have checked, the library has been there. They have expanded their young adult section quite a bit, so they've actually separated the young adult checkout from the adult checkout. So if you look at the checkout numbers, they're going to look a little off for a little bit. And we also added a magazine, additional magazine checkout as well. There's a lot of digital magazines to be checked out from the library. They have 20 meetings at the library in the month, and also 63 DVDs were added directly from donations from the public. And also 63 DVDs were added due to directly from donations from the public. There were almost, almost 3,000 items checked out for the month from between physical items and downloads throughout the course of that. All of the fall youth programming will begin shortly. All it begins after Labor Day. Some of those are weekly. Some of those are bi-weekly. These include Little Explorers, Kids Activity Day, Coding Club, Lego Club, small workshops. One of the things that I think is really interesting that they're offering is they're working with Woods County OSU Extension to hold monthly life skills boot camp workshops for people aged 15 to 25. Some of these will include like Laundry 101, teaching people how to do laundry that don't know how to do it or teaching people how to, you know, balance a checkbook, stuff like this. There's, if you guys are interested in this, you can either go to the library's social media pages or they have schedules of both the youth programs and the life skills programs at their front desk. They are doing Let's Talk About It, Oklahoma again in September, which is a book program that the Friends of the Library put on. They are trying to work on kind of restructuring a few things, organization-wise to accommodate some different things. And we did have a former Alba resident and library patron, Roxy Faulkner-Kirk. She came and did a book signing. She actually, Alba person published a book. A lot of people attended and her book is available for check at the library if you're interested. So that is the book of our meeting there.
Does Counsel have any questions for Mr. Eckhart? Item F is the Alberina Authority Meeting on August 6th. Wasn't at the meeting, there is in the packet, here's minutes. Joe Don, do you have anything?
I don't have anything to add from what the agenda minutes say.
Item G is the Alba Regional Airport Commission Meeting on August 12th. The airport met in addition to routine business minutes and whatnot. We did approve the memorandum agreement for our automated weather operating system. So that's gonna be brought up to be, or recertified if you want. Happy to answer any questions regarding the airport. Item H is the Alba Recreation Complex Board Meeting on August 14th, 2019. Mr. Sherman?
We discussed regular business. We only meet quarterly. One of the things we discussed and agreed upon was to get monthly financials emailed out to all the members so we can review those without having to go over three months at a time. Discussion on finding solutions for the roof of the main building which has leaked since the building was built. Talked about future plans for a splash pad, but most board members agreed that the infrastructure of the building was primarily concerned at the time.
Counsel have any questions for Mr. Sherman? Thank you. Finance Committee Meeting on July 22nd and August 19th, 2019. Dr. Hanford?
From tonight's finance meeting, we approved, reviewed and approved claims. Some of the large claims, have the general fund, some library roofs, basement units with about almost $20,000 fuel, $25,000 debt service over a little over $12,000. Of course, our normal fuel for the airport over about $18,000. Appreciate the comments. We spent over $112,000 for asphalt with our team to work on our streets. AUA, we had some well repairs that many of you know about for totaling almost $30,000. We did have three payrolls. You heard the larger payroll. That includes three payrolls, just one recently, so. Other than that, we did talk about the professional building roof, which we'll be talking about tonight. And then did start preliminary talks about going back to work and figuring out what we can do for the pool.
Counsel have any questions for Dr. Hanford?
The $30,000 on the well field, is that complete rehabilitation of the tube that we were looking at? Or is that only partial?
That's only replacement of pumps.
Okay.
And on, and it's not only two that we've been working on. There's two other wells that we'd had to replace pumps on and have them replaced.
Okay, so this isn't the two rehabilitation?
Right, no.
I'd, I'd have to budget it 50 for that, I'm against, sorry.
Any other questions for Dr. Hanford? Thank you. City Mayor's Report, I don't have anything to add to Mr. Smith's report.
Well, just kind of go down the list. I'll try to make some things pretty short. We are looking at several legislative events that are coming up through OML. They are gonna take up several issues that municipalities are concerned about. Everywhere from local control involving guns to the transport of mental health patients by law enforcement, to changes of the Competitive Meeting Act regarding public construction and purchasing policies. We did have sales tax, the sales tax meeting. Sales taxes, the Sales Tax Commission is discussing with businesses the ways to curtail the fraudulent use of sales tax exemptions. This is an issue that the Sales Tax Commission has asked for the liaison board in OML to help on. And we will be involved in that as a board and as a municipal league will be involved in that to some degree. The surplus property that we had declared not too long ago. We ended up opening bids on those. We sold six vehicles, the trailer and the air compressor. We have two tractors and another vehicle that did not sell. We are looking at listing those on Purple Wave as a public auction site to sell those items. We collected $2,716 on the sale of those, that equipment. As far as projects are concerned, we are working on, the main projects that we are working on right now are the chlorination transfer, the chlorination station and well field rehabilitation and the Skyline sanitary sewer lift station. We are, the well field rehabilitation is gonna take some time in getting those finished, probably another couple of months. But as far as the chlorination station and the Skyline sewer sanitary lift station, expect those to be finished as, by the end of this month. We will be discussing the professional building roof later on in this meeting. As far as the finances of the city of Alba are concerned, the financial report, we had, we've got budgeted to receive $16 million, a little over. Now that as of July, we had collected $987,000 across all funds. We've got budgeted expenditures at a little more than $15 million. And we've actually expended $918,000 or $919,000. This will bring our fund balance at the end of July from $5,763 to $5,735. Cash investments, cash in the bank as of August 16th was $56,000. Investments, $2.1 million. Loan payments at $58,000 in principal payments and $13,000 in interest payments we made in July. Sales tax received was, for the month of July, was $325,092 for sales and use tax. This is down from the month of June, but up from July 2018. And that would be my report, Mayor and Counsel. If you have any answering questions?
Counsel, have any questions for Mr. Duncan? Thank you. Item A is a presentation by Alba Friends of Play Foundation.
Good evening. My name's Bonnie Sitters. I'm the treasurer of the Alba Friends of Play Foundation. I know everybody got a digital copy. Would anybody like a paper copy? And right now, we have the funding to finish the retaining wall that we started back in 2016. And it's actually on the other side of the sidewalk. It goes down into the park or into the play area. And it's somewhat of a preparation for a further build. It can stand alone if we don't get the funding for that further future build. But right now, it's kind of as a future planning. So I mean, we've got this broke down into three requests. So the first request would be the approval on completing that retaining wall because we do currently have the funding to do that now. And Wilson Construction is ready to do it. They said they can start in five weeks if we get the approval for it. The next section that we have, these next two are broke down into separate ones because we're applying to funding from two different areas. So this one will be for the areas that we've already installed toys in. We know that the surfacing has deteriorated because of the water levels and stuff in the south end. And then the Girl Scout hut needs, the area needs more surfacing put back in. So what we're planning to do and what we have gotten quotes for and everything else is to come back in with what they call floor and play. And it's just a very fine granular rubber matting that they will come in. They will clear the level the ground, will put in crushed stone, and then they'll put that floor and play on there. And it's almost like liquid rubber. They just pour it in there. It adheres to the concrete border that we'll have to put around it. And then it should last, it's got a five-year warranty. We can get an extended warranty for 10 years. But as long as we refinish it, just do a light coat over the top of it every two to three years, it can last over 15 years. So it would be a solid surfacing that will last the lifetime of the toys. And we are fully prepared. As long as the park manager can let us know when things go wrong, we keep a maintenance fund to handle all of that. So we would take care of the resurfacing every two to three years as it was needed. Any toy repairs that are needed, all they have to do is let us know and we will order the parts. And then another thing in that area that we want to do is connect everything so that it's ADA compliant. And what we would do on the south end is where that ramp comes down, we want to branch it off and take it to the left to the smaller play area with another sidewalk. And then when it goes down and back to the south to the pavilion, we would connect the pavilion to that larger play area. And that way, everything would be connected and it would all be accessible. I know there was some issues and the railing was taken off of that sidewalk because it was not ADA compliant. I guess it was not wide enough, is what we were told with the railing on it. So we would come back in and either put railing on the outside or put a curb along it and attach it to the existing sidewalk so that we could put railing back up. Because there's some areas of that that's actually got a good foot and a half drop, which honestly can't be compliant either. So at least in my opinion, if they drop off on a wheelchair, it's not exactly a good thing. So we would come back in and refinish all of those and make sure everything was up to the standards and that's the code. The third section that we wanted to do is requesting permission to put in new toys. We are going in, and this area, we are, based on the toy cost and the concrete costs that we have currently, we are estimating about $400,000 for this area. So we are going to a large donor to apply for funding. And obviously, this will not happen if we don't get the funding for it. It will take time to get other funding solutions. But we want to come in and remove the old toys, not the lighthouse or the ship that we've already repainted. Those will stay. And then we want to put in new toys in that area. We have a couple of small toys up in the north end where there isn't anything but the volleyball net. That way, there's something up there because I know every time that I've gone to a kid's birthday party up there, the kids wanted to go play on the toys and the parents in this line wanted to walk all the way down there. So it gives them something to do up in that area as well as still leaving to open space for volleyball and whatever else they want to do. The exact location of that, we're trying to fit it into between the pavilion and the volleyball net. With the size of the toys, we may not allow that. So we may have to basically pivot the volleyball net so that it goes a little bit further to the west that we would relocate it and we would cover the cost of all that. We don't want to take it out. We just want to make sure that there's space. But the less concrete to run a sidewalk from the pavilion to that play area, the better the cost for us and the more convenient it is for anybody that's ADA acceptable. And it doesn't have to have a concrete sidewalk running all the way to the west end of that area. And the pictures that I included in your packets are just mock-ups. They are the exact toys that we're gonna be putting in, but the arrangement may change depending on the spacing. And then in the diagrams, the actual diagrams they gave us, anything you see with a shaded area is gonna have a cover over it. We've actually got shade structures coming in over the top of the three or four of the toys. Just though even if there's, they're not all covered, some of the toys are covered with shades. So if they need to get into a shaded edge space, they will be able to do that. The toddler area, which would be the west side of the park where it's got that big low wide slide and the merry-go-round, all of those would come out. We'll put in a new swing set and then another multi-element toy structure there. Because the slide's not up to code, the merry-go-round's not up to code. And the swing set, it makes, nothing else that needs repainted, but we might, it's actually cheaper to come in and replace it than it is to repaint it because of the cost of paint that you need to put on those toys. So we would come in and do that. One of the elements on that swing set is gonna be one of the joint swings, which is actually where a parent can sit facing a toddler in the swing set and swing together. And so that is actually one of the things that a lot of the people we've talked to would really appreciate having to come in there when they first developed those. The next area that has got multiple small pieces is gonna be between the white house and, or not the white house, excuse me, the ship and the existing swing set on the east side. And we're gonna replace the swing set, but then we will run everything in that area. And it's just multiple large components that will, you know, will replace the slide that we took off of the white house years ago. And we've got a double slide coming in to replace that. And there's a big climbing, they call it the eagle's nest. It's a big climber that they can climb up and around and in and out. It's a, there's what they call a merry-go-all, which is actually an ADA toy as well. So they actually sit in seats and they can spin around in it. And then one of the arch swings, which is like essentially a tire swing that comes down from both sides, but it's a platform that they can move around and swing on. And then over on the other area, which is where the existing toy is now, further to the south, the reason for that retaining wall that we're wanting to build now is eventually we want to put in a structure that comes out from that that has multiple ADA toys. That space will be all ADA compliant toys where the, it's one of the things that will come off of that is what they call rock and raft. They can actually wheel, a wheelchair out there, lock it in place and the whole thing moves back and forth with the wheelchair on it so that they can get basically the sensation of swinging in that kind of motion. And then there'll be a couple of other small components coming off of that. But the purpose of that retaining wall and building it where we need it to is for every foot of raise on a ramp, you have to have 12 foot of distance. So to get basically to where we need to be, which is three foot, we have to have 36 foot of ramp. If we can do that retaining wall, we're already at at least two foot, if not more, to get that. So, and what the contractor said when we do that retaining wall, we'll do it just like we did the other side. And then when they come in to install that toy, he will concrete out at that time to the uprights for the toy itself. That way, we don't have to worry about having something sticking out in the way if it's a couple of years before we do this or whatever. So we can adjust it at the time we get ready to put the toys in. And basically, I mean, that's essentially what we're wanting is just approval to go ahead and do that. I mean, back in 2011 when we started, we got blanket approval from the board with the understanding that we would come back every time we wanted to do another build. We are, by September 1st, we'll be ready to apply for all this funding. We'll have all of our numbers in and ready to send in the applications. So we wanted, before we did that and got approval for funding, we wanted to make sure we had approval from the board to put the installation, do the installations. As of right now, they run on quarterly approvals. So it would probably be spring of next year before we do any of the major installs. And that's basically it. If anybody's got any questions?
Thank you. Does Counsel have any questions?
No, I just think it's great. I think it's awesome. It's wonderful. It's really, really good.
Okay, I'm gonna play the old card. All the concrete, children falling. How do we ensure that?
Okay, well, what, what do you, about all the concrete, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, it shows, you talk about that here and all the concrete and you mentioned it a number of times. and you mentioned it a number of times around some of those things. I know you, the part where the toys are is going to be a rubber.
Right.
Children, that's our allergic to rubber, which we have a lot of that now.
As far as I know, there is nothing, I mean, it doesn't say anything about their information. I've never had them mention anything to me about a rubber allergy. I mean, I'm going to be happy to look into it. But I've never had them mention anything to me about a latex allergy, with that being a situation or an issue.
Just a worry. I went to the high school and there were signs all over.
Yeah, then we've had a kid move up from the middle school, I think.
Yes, a latex allergy, and then the concrete worries me.
Well, the concrete, around the play areas, the only thing that's going to be concrete, except for one spot, it's going to be a curb. It's going to be probably about four to six inches wide, running around the perimeter, which is why it will stop the rubber in place, so it won't move. There actually won't be any concrete underneath it. It'll all be crushed stone, so it's still got a hard surface. But the rubber itself is about four inches thick. So, I mean, it's, it's got a good impact. And they, what they do is they use the stone to adjust for the fall height level of the toys. And so, they will adjust what is the required fall height based on the stone level underneath the rubber. So, there'll be thicker rubber where it needs to be, and then not as much where it doesn't need to be. And then, the concrete on the sidewalks and stuff, obviously, they would be outside the perimeter. One of the things we plan to do with the ADA area is actually running a perimeter sidewalk all the way up and around those toys. So, when they come, if you come up the ramp to the toy that's already there, there's a little opening, we'll run a sidewalk starting there and all the way around the toys, so that they can get on at any point, but they don't have to go in between and amongst the other toys to get onto a toy.
Question, Mary, I think, I think what she's also trying to describe is that that rubber goes flush with the curb, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
So, there's not really a trip stepping down or stepping off hazardous flat.
And our plan, when we install the new toys, is to make sure that all the concrete is ground level. So, like mowing issues and stuff like that, they don't have to come out and weed everything. They can just mow right next to it, and we won't have a whole lot of maintenance that way.
And then, on the very bottom, it talks about the sledding during the winter months.
Yeah, and that was one of the concerns we had. It was actually brought up at our meeting before this one. Between the lighthouse and the existing toy, they do a lot of sledding. That's the fast tilt, is what I understand. And on the other side, there is some sledding done in that area. To be completely ADA compliant, we have to connect the lighthouse somehow to either one of the other play areas or out to the road, give access to it. And we were going to originally put a sidewalk out there, but that was the concern is, you know, sledding down, the snow's not that thick, you hit the concrete, and there they go. And so, what we have considered doing now is just holding off on connecting that until we look into maybe a turf surfacing or something that we can put underneath it. And so, if that's something the council wants us to wait on, we will go ahead and surface around the lighthouse and everything else, but we'll wait on making that connection.
When you said the total amount for all the toys and the equipment was 400,000?
For just that, part three is about 400,000.
Just the part three?
Yeah.
And if, if you didn't give the full funding, would you try to do things in stages, or?
That is one of our original plans, that's why that map's there at the beginning of that. Is, you know, we had it out with zones, and we were raising funds by zone to put in new toys. And but at this point, we feel that we have, we've actually raised and put into almost $100,000 already between grants and everything else on those toys that are already there. And so, we feel that we've done enough to show an effort and a dedication to apply for these funds that we're going to apply for. So that hopefully, we will get those. Otherwise, yeah, we will continue to break it down into the zone areas and work zone by zone.
Council, have any more questions?
Again, thank you, Bonnie. And as you mentioned, I mean, the Friends of Play have been working at the park for a good number of years now, and we do appreciate you continuing to come back and tell us what your plans are, and they are great plans. And so, this isn't an action item on our agenda. It's just something, continue to work with City Hall and parks, and appreciate your work.
Thank you guys very much.
Item nine is vote to receive the official election returns of the general election held on August 13th, 2019, for the approval of $2.5 million general obligation bond to fund the repairs and refurbishment of the Alba's public swimming pool. Now, this is standard items to acknowledge the election outcome. I'd entertain a motion.
I have a motion to receive the official election returns presented by Lewis County Elections.
Have a motion by Dr. Hannaford, second by Mrs. Hamilton, to receive the official election returns for the general election, general election on August 13th, 2019, as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 10, excuse me, is discussion in action to rescind ordinance number 2019-002. This was passed on June 17th to call for the election for the ONG's franchise tax. The required companion resolution was presented at that time. When that was realized, it was brought to ONG's attention. There was not sufficient time for the resolution to be considered and passed and meet the timeline requirements for the election. So, therefore, legal counsel recommends rescinding this ordinance and considering new ordinance. Is there anything to add? I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to rescind ordinance 2019-002?
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman, second by Mr. Winters, to rescind ordinance 2019-002. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Item 11 is discussion in action on ordinance number 2019-003, an ordinance granting to One Gas Inc., acting by and through its Oklahoma Natural Gas Company Division and its successors and assigns for a period of 25 years from approval and acceptance of this ordinance, a non-exclusive franchise, and right to enter the public ways to install, operate, and maintain a distribution system within, along, across, over, and under the public ways of the city of Alba for the transportation, distribution, and/or sale of gas to consumers and the public generally in the city, defining the words and phrases therein, providing for assignment, sale, or lease of the franchise, providing that the city may enact an ordinance charging persons transporting gas through, grantees, distribution system, and be on the calculated value of such transported gas, providing for use and repair of the public ways, providing for regulation of service, establishing depth of pipelines, establishing rights and duties in the movement and alteration of pipelines, providing for indemnification of the city of Alba, providing for grantees' rules and regulations, providing for inspection of grantees' records, requiring grantee to pay a franchise fee, providing for conditions of the franchise, providing for construction of this ordinance upon the invalidity of any part thereof, providing for the submission of this ordinance to an election of the qualified voters of the city, providing for acceptance of this franchise by grantee in both the effective and operative date thereof, repealing all other ordinances directly in conflict herewith, and providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Go ahead, Kevin, or somebody.
Well, this is just the replacement ordinance for the one we just rescinded with new dates. We do have a new, we do have the correct resolution to go as a companion to this. This is exactly like it was presented at the last council meeting. I'm not answering questions that you may have.
I don't have any questions, but I have some comments. Of course, you all know how I feel about this whole thing. But the reality is, is this is a tax. And frankly, it's a tax without a purpose, other than increasing general coppers. Our citizens just rejected a tax that had a purpose behind it. And I fully believe that this is going to get shot down in the polls. So, why even send it to a vote of the people when we can go ahead and force ONG back to the table to negotiate? When they were here last time, they couldn't even cite their investments in the community and their infrastructure, nor could they cite their contributions to the, to the community. And I just don't feel like the ONG, or that the citizens should be paying ONG's permits. I've been doing even additional research, and had researched this in the past. And I pulled up an article where ENID, back in 2014, was going through their ONG franchise agreement. And I believe it was said very well by their Ward III Commissioner, Ben Ezell. "We have no way to predict what it's going to be in 25 years, and I'm not going to hamstring a future commission." We shouldn't be putting in an agreement of 25 years that increases the tax on our citizens, that we know they're going to reject, in my opinion. It was also noted in that same article that the ENID council made the statement that when ONG and city negotiators reached an impasse, Chisholm said, "We had to poll the commission on how to proceed. Simply knowing they would reject it wouldn't be enough." ONG needed to know that. They won't come back to the table until we reject it. They won't listen to us until we reject it. So, I implore you all to vote no, and bring them back to the table.
I would echo what Danny said through my research. But I found the same thing, many communities around Oklahoma, while it is the norm to throw a 25-year out there, many of them don't ever look at the ordinance, don't ever look at the franchise agreement. I think it's way too long to hamstring the city. And on top of that, if ONG doesn't donate near what the citizens of Alba pay them in a year, or what they pay us technically in a year through a pass-through tax, if this was as the ordinance even reads, them paying for a franchise, then they should be paying it, not citizens of Alba.
Counselor, is this something that can be tabled, or does it have to be voted no to bring them back to the table, or?
You can tell you what further discussion.
And then, they'll run out, vote the time limit, maybe?
They will expire.
Expiring.
But they're not going to pull the natural gas that level from Oklahoma.
More likely, they're going to service us no matter what.
That's correct.
I mean, nobody else could come.
And they even said that in their, when they, they will continue to service us. This just gives them, from my research, the franchise agreement gives them banking power. So, when they go and they try to apply to put a line in somewhere, and they need $50 million to run a long line or something like that, they say, "Well, we have franchise agreements in all these communities, so we're giving them banking power by handing away the franchise agreement."
The ball's entirely in our court. Not having a franchise agreement affects ONG more than it does us. We lose $64,000 a year in funding, which in a $15 million budget is pennies.
Who asked for the increase?
Who asked for the increase?
I'm 34 percent.
That was part of negotiations, we were negotiating.
What do you ask for?
We can approve, disapprove, table, approve with modifications.
So, this would be 11 and 12, correct? Item 11, 12, I'll make motion to table 11, item 11 and 12.
No.
No.
Can't do that one?
I think, I think we need to reject it, and let ONG come back.
You got a motion on the table. Is there a second?
He's going to have to come back.
Have a motion by Dr. Hannaford, and second by Mr. Stelling to table item 11. Is there any further discussion?
I agree with Brandon tabling this motion as, or taking the motion to table is just going to delay, and then coming back to the table until we vote no, then we'll come back.
Mr. Counsel, can I amend my motion?
No, you got a motion and second to vote on it, if it's rejected.
So, is it, with tabling, is that just, we're just kicking it down the road? We're not going to ask them something, or is it like?
That's what I'm saying, we're still.
I mean, we're. Are we not going to ask them?
From the research I've done, tabling does not bring them back to the table. Tabling says that we treat discussions ourselves. Rejecting outright brings them back to the table, from other cities that have done it.
Well, I think we can ask them to come back to the table.
There's a motion and a second, there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote. Motion is to table at this time. Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
No.
Hamilton?
No.
Eckhart?
No.
Sherman?
No.
Winters?
No.
All right, motion has failed. I would entertain another motion on this, or?
Motion to reject, number, whatever. Motion to reject ordinance 2019-003.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman, second by Mr. Winters, to reject ordinance number 2019-003. Is there any further discussion?
What are we asking for, shorter time period, or?
I mean, we're the ones that originally asked for the increase in three to four percent. I mean.
Shorter time period, and no pass-through, or no franchise?
I'm even, I would even accept the pass-through as long as there's some form of giving back to the city. But as it sits right now, we're paying their permits for absolutely nothing. And when I say we, the citizens, are paying their permits for absolutely nothing.
Is there anything we can take?
If you can do that, then.
We would have the option of assigning a council committee to negotiate this, you know, and then they come back to the table, whatever. So, is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
So, that then makes item 12 non-issue, or we still have it? Okay. Item 12 is a resolution, 2019-006, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Alba to issue an election proclamation calling for a special election in the city of Alba, given that the previous was rejected. That would be appropriate for the motion being to reject this as well.
A motion to reject resolution 2019-006.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, and second by Mr. Sherman, to reject resolution 2019-006, as stated in item number 12. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 13 is discussion in action on resolution 2019-007, electing one at-large member to the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund Board trustees to fill the expiring term of at-large trustee representing the entire membership. I don't know that any of these folks would do a poor job. I know that the gentleman from Frederick and the gentleman from Drumrite are going to probably have a little bit better grasp on, you know, what kind of issues that we play, we face as a small community. I do know, having attended OML meetings with Mr. Johnston, and he's been performing on the OMRF board for some time now. That I think, as one of the nominees, he would certainly be qualified and able to continue serving at this different, I guess this is a different capacity.
No, he's been serving this capacity for quite some time.
Okay. we get the opportunity to choose who we want to be on that board.
As I was reading through them, personally, Mrs. Sanders and Mr. Winery, or who stood out to me, Mrs. Sanders. Mrs. Sanders, having that she has 20-plus years of human resource experience, and Mr. Winery, and that he has a master's degree in human resources, both of which would deal with, part of which would deal with retirement funds, so that's my two cents.
Winery also stood out to me.
I think they all do fine.
Realistically, yeah.
I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to elect Mark Winery to the, is it OK? I'm going to read that wrong.
Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund.
We're talking about fun.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, and a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to elect Mark Winery, or to approve resolution 2019-007, elect, electing Mark Winery as an at-large member to the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund Board of Trustees to fill the expiring term of that large trustee representing the entire membership. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Haniford.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Item 14, this discussion in action to award professional building roof replacement to flying out commercial and residential roofing in the amount of $153,480. Mary, do you want to take this?
No, I don't have the paperwork. I mean, I don't have the decks in front of me. I don't, I don't have those.
We originally looked at six different proposals.
Six different proposals.
All had different types of coverings and.
And this one is the same as the library?
Yes.
And so.
It was the only bed.
It was the only bed that came in after we sent them all out, and that was the only one that came in.
And then once it did the library roof, so.
And they did.
I know what they're doing.
I'd entertain a motion, and is there any discussion?
Like, I'd make a motion to award the professional building roof replacement to flying out commercial and residential roofing in the amount of $153,480.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton, a second by Mr. Sherman, to award professional building roof replacement to flying out commercial and residential roofing in the amount of $153,480. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Joe Don, on that, on their bed, did they say when they'd start?
That's up to us. We'll get them in here, we'll let them, notify them if they are the winning bid, and we are going to issue a contract with them, we'll determine their start date and their completion date at that time.
And this is something we'll talk, this has to be done first before we start any of the other negotiations.
Yeah, yes.
Have we considered, because this was not a budgeted item, correct?
That's correct.
Have we considered what we will be pushing off to the side to cover it? Has that, has any thought to that been?
We've been looking at the items to see what can be delayed for a later date, but there's been no decision, there's been no recommendation made for that yet.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Haniford.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Item 15, this discussion on possible action to approve an agreement with the Northwest Technology Center in Alva to provide a school resource officer for the 2019-2020 school year. We started providing this to Northwest TAC in March of 2013 with the Alva Police Department for their school resource officer. On, you know, we've had a pretty good history of doing this with them. This would continue that service to the tech center with our officers at a rate of $35.55 an hour on a monthly basis for the actual hours worked. And is that, Joe Don, is that the same, or is it a?
That's a, that's a little bit of an increase from last year. Last year, they stayed flat for the same, for two, for a two-year period, so we adjusted that for the rates that the officers are now making.
But they're paying costs, right?
They're paying us, they're paying us. And it's roughly two hours of work per day, a school day, so that's what the scope of the work would be.
What was the rate before? Do you recall that offhand?
Well, this is a 5% increase.
Okay.
And this doesn't take away from the Alva Public School?
No.
If there's no further discussion out there, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agreement of Northwest Technology Center in Alva to provide a school resource officer for the FY 20 school year. Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Haniford, and a second by Mr. Stelling, to approve an agreement with Northwest Technology Center in Alva to provide a school resource officer for the 2019-2020 school year. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Sorry, Haniford.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Item 16, this discussion in action to reappoint Charles Murrow to the Alva Board of Adjustments for a three-year term ending in June 2022. Murrow has been serving on the Board of Adjustments, and he's willing to serve another term, and I would recommend council reappoint Mr. Murrow.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Charles Murrow to the Alva Board of Adjustment for a three, I suppose a three-year term? Three-year term ending in June 2022.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Eckhart, a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to reappoint Charles Murrow to the Alva Board of Adjustments for a three-year term ending in June 2022. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Haniford.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Item 17, this discussion in action to reappoint Paul Kinsey to the Alva Airport Commission for a five-year term ending in June 2024. Like with Mr. Murrow, Mr. Kinsey's been serving the airport commission for a while now, and I originally appointed in 2011, and I recommend council reappoint Mr. Kinsey to the airport commission.
I'll motion to reappoint, reappoint Mr. Paul Kinsey to the Alva Airport Commission for a five-year term ending in June 2024.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Eckhart, to reappoint Paul Kinsey to the Alva Airport Commission for a five-year term ending in June 2024. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Haniford.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Item 18, this discussion in action to enter into executive session pursuant to 25OS 307B1 and B2 to discuss the following: employment of city business manager Joe Don Dunham and contract negotiations with IAFF Local 3782 in Alva. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll motion to enter into executive session pursuant to 25OS 307B dot 1 and B dot 2 to discuss the employment of city business manager Joe Don Dunham and contract negotiations with IAFF Local 3782 of Alva Local 11.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling, to enter into executive session pursuant to 25OS 307B1 and B2 to discuss the employment of city business manager Joe Don Dunham and contract negotiation with IAFF Local 3782 in Alva. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Haniford.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
All right, at this time, I would ask the council members to remain, Rick, to remain. At this time, everybody else, I'd like to ask you to please step out. Item 20 is action in regard to the employment of the city business manager Joe Don Dunham. The, there's no action to be taken, we'll affirm the continued employment of the city business manager. Item 21, this action in regard to negotiation with IFF Local 3782 Alva, Oklahoma, is discussed in executive session, again, there's no action to be taken there at this time either. Item 22 is remarks and inquiries by council members.
Yes, I've got one with the Personnel Committee. We've had a, another recognition for our employee recognition program, actually two of them, both Angelica Brady and Lisa Pettygene, who have worked in our office. They've done a great job, and we're doing the reconstruction of both buildings, really putting a lot of extra work in, a lot of painting that they did on their own, also spent time to, you know, hang all the nice pictures, and did all, a lot of that stuff that's really made this a much better facility. So Angelica and I know. Lisa, where's she at? Oh, right there, she is there. We want to congratulate you all, and of course, we kept this a secret, so, but, once you guys do choose your, because you usually handle that, but once you choose your restaurants and stuff, we will get that to you, but we very much appreciate it, and we'd be all for you, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Paul wanted to mention, get us to the street department, I mean, granted, I mean, we can't do them all at once, we've got the set areas that we decided on how we're going to do it, and they've been working out there in tremendous heat, and we've done a lot of painting this year, and we expect to do a lot more, and this, I mean, this is, this is, I'm glad, gradually, is the time you got to do all of the asphalting and stuff, but they've been, they've been working, working hard at it, everything, so we're, we're making progress.
I'd like to say thank you for, citizens, for coming out and voting. Big thank you for everybody that showed up tonight to voice your opinion, and I really, really appreciate it. It is hard as a city council member to rarely hear from anybody, so when you guys show up and talk, or show up and vote, that lets us know what the community's thinking. So it's kind of hard to ask each one of you individually every single time something comes up, but for you guys to show up here, it means a lot. Secondly, it was something that was brought up during public comment, that I just wanted to say, every audit since I have been on finance committee and been member of city council has been returned clean, I dare you to find any city that does not have deficiencies on their audit somewhere. It always happens. It's a lot of money to move around, it's a lot of money to, to keep track of, and it's a lot of things that we have to keep under law, but we've never been returned as a bad audit.
I like that, and real quick, Angelica, will you please stay so we can get a picture right after the meeting?
If you insist.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I know there were a lot of people who came out about the medical marijuana. I had just tentatively put out there a poll, because I know, I believe, a lot of us felt that the majority of the community disagreed with our current ordinance, so I just wanted to actually see, and the results of that have actually ended today, and I was surprised to find that 76% of the almost 400 votes that were cast on that opposed our current ordinance, so I understand the wanting to kind of wait on the state's moving target, but I will say, the general consensus of the population, it seems, is that they do oppose the ordinance.
Any other comments? We will adjourn the city council meeting and open the regular meeting of the Alva Utility Authority. Angelica, when you're ready, would you please call the roll?
Winters.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Eckhart.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Haniford.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Item 3 is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved, normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, it will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 15, 2019. Item B is the approval of claims in the amount of $212,417.33, payroll expenses of Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Winters, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Haniford.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
All right, we'll close the utility authority meeting and open the Economic Development Authority regular meeting. Angelica, when you're ready, please call the roll.
Winters.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Eckhart.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
Hamilton.
Yes, here.